This special session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 6:19 PM on Tuesday, December 1, 2020, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson.
Here.
Ms. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Marvin.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Schlesner.
Here.
Chair Seelinger.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
2.01, approval of the agenda. This is an action item. Superintendent?
Yes, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Full approval, Marvin.
Second, Amundson.
Ms. Edgar. Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan.
Aye.
Chair Seelinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Item 7.09, Superintendent Evaluation Toolkit. Oh, should be 701. 701, Superintendent Evaluation Toolkit. Tool, toolkit, tool review. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our ad hoc committee of Director Nathan, Director Amundson, and Director Workman.
Thank you, Chair Seelinger. Good to, just to ground us, give us a little timeline of where we've been with this. This is an annual process of identifying goals for the superintendent for the year that are related to the goals that we have for the district and are related to our strategic plan. And then the school board uses those goals to evaluate the superintendent. We updated our process last year from some guidance from the Minnesota School Boards Association and developed a new tool. And we discussed as a board the tool and decided that we would continue to use it with some modifications. And we discussed that at a study session in August. And then Director Workman and Director Amundson and myself were identified to flesh out the tool for this year. And that's the document that you see in your board docs this evening. Without going through the tool line by line, I want to put it in context of the evaluation process. So the first document is titled Superintendent Goals and Evidence. And that's the part of the process where we set the goals for the year and we identify those pieces of evidence that we would like the superintendent to provide to the board. There's also three other documents that we started working on as the ad hoc committee but are not discussing tonight because they're part of a later section of the evaluation process, and that's the actual evaluation rubric. Source language from the Minnesota School Boards Association to develop that rubric. And then we were also asked to craft a suggested job, extended job description for the superintendent. So those are not on the documents tonight nor on the agenda, but just to know that that'll have to be something that we schedule for the future. Chair Seelinger, I don't know how you want me to walk through the goals and evidence document. I can give an overview of how they're tied perhaps to our strategic plan goals and then let people ask questions. Okay. One of the overarching pieces of our conversation in our study session was the desire of all the board members to tie the superintendent goals directly to each of our areas of our strategic plan. So the first section of the superintendent goals relate to access and equity. So we can call that Goal 1A area our equity area, where we talk about our equity plans that are currently under development and metrics to measure the outcomes from those plans. The second piece is student achievement, which is the second area of our strategic plan. And this goal 2 is really focused on student achievement and outcomes in this time of the pandemic and how we can intentionally look at how our students are doing and the programs that we're implementing to make sure that they have the highest outcomes possible. And then the third area of the strategic plan is accountability. And here we had a discussion about the expectations of the graduate profile. And we've talked as a board and the cabinet has shared with us the struggle that there really aren't metrics yet to develop, developed to measure the graduate profile outcomes. So we talked about how we might be able to start down that path of developing those metrics to measure the graduate profile outcomes. And for each of those areas, we have specific evidence of performance, which are either documents, reports, presentations to the school board that demonstrate how that goal has been met. And I'll let Director Workman and Amundson add anything, or we can ask questions.
Now I'll turn my mic back on now. The only thing I'd like to add is that we have been through this document with the superintendent, so you all know that it's been reviewed by all of us.
So I'm assuming, I see Director Marvin's got her hand up, but I'm assuming questions, should we kind of start from the beginning and go through or if there's any general questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead with Director Marvin.
Sorry, I was just talking with my microphone off. You just answered my question, and I will wait till we get to the section for which I have a question.
Super. Director Marvin, or sorry, Director Barlow, do you have any questions on the first goal and evidence section or any general questions?
This would fall under the category of general, and it's in regards to something Director Nathan shared, just a point of inquiry. Kathy had referenced reporting to the board, and I'm curious, is there a reporting out to the community component or expectation, or where would that fall?
I think we, the way that we've set up the evidence is to have it reported at a school board meeting. So it's not a private report to the board or just a document that we get, it would be done at a public school board meeting, so the community would be able to see and read the documents themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Director Barlow. I'm watching hands, so just making sure there was no follow-up. Okay, so I have a question on the evidence, Evidence of Performance 1A point 1. The first line is, "Present to the school board a detailed written plan for equity work in the district." I just wanted to clarify, is that a separate plan or is that the pieces of all the different plans listed below are coming together? So what was the vision for that?
Yep, you said it very well. It's the pieces of all those plans coming together.
Okay. Great. Any other questions, board members, from the section Goal 1A section? I'll give a pause, not like you're, you know, you know me, I won't cut you off if we come back to it and you forget, that's fine. I'll go on to Superintendent Goal 1B. So I have highlighted in my notes, the goal is, "Superintendent will provide leadership working with the school board to identify and select metrics that evaluate process on equity work and impacts on student outcomes." I believe that we've, we as many other districts have struggled with the metrics piece, is that sort of a process piece, or was there some, I guess over my other column I have say more or give an example? Can you say more about the metrics?
Sure. So I think in our study session, and it wasn't the first time we've talked about it, I think we've talked about it when we've had the discipline data in front of us as well, that the board has expressed a desire to have other metrics related to equity outcomes, and the superintendent has asked, well, what would those metrics be? And I think we talked, that the best way to get to that would be to have a study session where we could perhaps have cabinet or even a subcommittee, the board do some research about what metrics are being used in the area of the outcomes. But for us, because we have a plan with those four components, we're hoping that we'll be able, we're at a point where we have something more concrete that we can link the metrics to, so that they're not new metrics we're making up, they're tied directly to the plan that's already being discussed and under development.
Okay, thank you. Director Marvin?
Thank you. I think that's going to be an important discussion, and I would just suggest, and I'm sure you've thought about this already, that in that discussion, we have our equity specialists and our director of equity work with us in terms of what, you know, what should we be looking for and how would they measure, I mean, but take seriously the recommendations that they have in terms of what needs to be measured, how it's going to look.
I think we also have the resource of the Midwestern Plains Equity Center as well, who might be able to give us some best practices and research on that too.
All right, I have a few follow-up questions in that, oh, sorry, no, it's the next one. 1C, Evidence, the third bullet point, Action Plan for Implementation of 2021 Year to Recruit Additional Staff of Color, et cetera. So I know that some of that lives in our Achievement and Integration Plan. Is this, again, is this a separate plan document or is this kind of a complement to that or overlap?
It's a complement and an overlap. I think there might be some more historical data that we're looking to establish, some baseline data on where we've been, so that as we go forward, we have some place to start as we measure our progress.
Okay, great. And then my last one in this section was a question on the bullet point about the numerical goal set for increasing staff of color. So I have some concern about that because I know that a numerical goal can be hard to achieve, knowing that, you know, the things that we can control and we can't control. And so, you know, I was, whatever district I was reading about recently, if to get to their goal of hiring diverse staff, they'd have to convince 90% of the teachers of color who graduated to come to their district for them to make their goal, right? So the competition, at least just in Minnesota, is very great. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, that we're being reasonable about things that, I don't have a problem setting goals by any means. I do get concerned when we're talking about a static number because, you know, that may just, that may not be achievable. And so, and you all know that, right? We know this is a bigger, you know, bigger systemic problem, not just a one piece of hiring folks, but. Kathy or Melissa, you both have your hands up, so I don't know if somebody wants to address that.
So I think the beauty of that is that the goal isn't set by us, the goal can be set by those who work with the hiring and recruitment. And I think any kind of progress is progress because we all know it's very hard to move that along. But I also think, you know, sometimes, you know, sticking a stake in the ground and saying, this is where we're hoping to be is a very motivating practice. So I think that was, that was what we were thinking is that you, every year we say that we'd like to see this improve because we do, we do want to see it improve, but there has to be some way to measure it.
And I also think it gives us the opportunity to share with the community the numerical goal and then the constraints behind it. I think it's too amorphous to say we're going to increase the number because some people's expectations might be over here and some people's might be over here. But as we said, we've talked about the reality of the situation and those things that are out of our control. So I think it'll help with our communication to the community so that they understand how that number came about and how our constraints constrain that number.
Sure. Mark?
Along with the lines of information to the community, as you all have the fun of going into the budget discussions here next year, with these efforts, I think it would be wise to let the public know how much money is being spent in this space to overcome these issues. You know, there's a lot of community discussion about the school district is not doing enough, but I don't think anybody knows how much the school district is truly doing and how much money is being put into trying to solve these issues. So when some hard decisions need to be made, it would be good to have clarity on the cost of these efforts as well.
I think that's a good point, Director Schlesner. I was just looking through some Association of Metropolitan School District, some of their reimagine platform work, and it kind of spoke to that directly, the looking at the budget and the percentage of the budget. And, you know, that's one way, of course, to support their equity work is to not chip away at that budget because they're, you know, holding that in high regard. So I think that's a great point.
Extremely important stuff, needs to be spelled out.
Anything else, board members, on Goal 1? Okay, Goal 2, is there any questions on Goal 2? This is the, I don't want to say the COVID goal, but in a way it is, right? Director Marvin?
If this isn't complicated, you think I could get it right, honestly, two clicks, thank you. Under Evidence of Performance 2.2, so these are the things that we're going to be looking at to determine if performance is effective or not. The last bullet there is effectiveness of specific programs and services implemented by the district specific to COVID-19. I'm assuming that these services would include things like ensuring that students have devices, that they have Wi-Fi, that they have food. How do we measure effectiveness? Is that going to be just numbers or what does effective mean there that we're going to be looking for?
Well, the reason we didn't specify specific metrics or, you know, specific data points is because we wanted to leave it to the superintendent and his cabinet to identify the answer to that for us. But we did say that it could be quantitative data, it could be qualitative data like from surveys, you know, however, the measurement could be different for each of the, for the different services. So we're here, we're here to see not just the numbers, but the reasoning behind the numbers. So we have a shared understanding of really what the best way is to measure student outcomes in all categories.
Thank you.
Chair Seelinger?
And during our committee discussion, when preparing this one, we thought this would be an excellent opportunity to showcase and to celebrate all of the fabulous things, all the innovations and all the creative thinking. And so, you know, again, it's not something that's easy for us to dictate because it's happening all the time. And it's going to be a fun one, I think, to highlight.
Director Bar, oh, sorry, Director Workman and then Director Barlow.
Right. I'd like to make the point too that, especially for the public, as you're looking at Goal 2, this isn't something that the superintendent has been sitting around waiting to be given direction on what to do. So a lot of this is well underway, as I'm assuming anybody who's been paying attention is aware. But just to say, you know, he has said in previous meetings, hey, this is all stuff that I do. So here we are in December already, and the school year is well underway, and he's been addressing the things that we're looking for for evidence. So this isn't new stuff that he has to come up with.
Thank you. Director Barlow?
And my question deals with whether it is quantitative or qualitative, will we as a board have the capacity based on what superintendent or cabinet presents, what we have, will this bring us closer together in our acceptance of what the superintendent/cabinet may present as the evidence necessary for us as a board to then rate appropriately? I only offer this because it seems like in times past, we've struggled with, in the absence of what we may perceive to be quantitative or qualitative data and/or information. So I guess I want to be sure that what we're, what's being presented tonight as a briefing item and hopefully will be approved is something that we're going to hold ourselves to as well in terms of, once we say, well, this is the instrument, then we will certainly, you know, go by that ourselves. Is that correct? Am I making a correct assumption in that?
So this, if you compare this document to what we were talking about last year, you'll notice that what is not included in this document is the rubric portion. So where there was the highly effective, effective, developing, and ineffective, that's an entirely separate document that we'll schedule a time to talk about, where we take the standards for performance from the Minnesota School Board Association and tie it to each one of these goal and topic areas. So this just outlines the goals and the kinds of information we're going to be looking at. How we evaluate that information, we'll have an entirely separate conversation about. So you're right, Director Barlow, we can be really clear on how we take what's in this document and convert it into a rubric and some sort of conclusion about the performance at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see. Anything else on Goal 2? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. Goal 3, also for public information. So we, you know, we discussed this in a study session with the superintendent in August, and we had both Director Nathan and Director Marvin take notes. And so the committee received both sets of notes, so I think that's a good, just wanted to point that out, that this isn't a committee who just decided, you know, what to do on their own, that this was, and I think it was, it was kind of interesting to see two sets of notes because, of course, people don't capture the same things, which is sort of why I have this question, except I'm not, honestly, I took notes on this question several weeks ago, so I'm not entirely sure what it means anymore, but I'll ask it and maybe somebody else can decipher what I possibly meant. So the superintendent Goal 3, "The superintendent will create and administer surveys on graduate profile skills and components and use the resulting data to plan future upgrades to strategic plan goals and strategies related to the graduate profile." So my note on this was, I think that I felt like this was a task and not so much of a goal. When I kind of looked at, you know, compared it to the Goal 1 and 2, it's a little bit more, well, I guess, task oriented. And then I also had a note to look at Jean's notes, and we're under accountability. And in Jean's note, under accountability, her goal, and I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just sort of trying to get this in my mind, her goal said, "Provide ongoing professional development and support to staff as they create new ways of engaging and challenging their students. Adjust strategies as needed based on feedback from staff and community." So, you know, I know that you guys, it's been a while since you worked on this or maybe looked at it real closely, but does my question make any sense in terms of the task versus goal? Thanks.
Yes, and I think the conversation that we had, and I will let Director Marvin also pipe in on her notes, was, you know, we went back and looked at the notes and went back and actually looked at the conversation. We had a pretty explicit conversation about the evidence piece, that it, the conversation focused on that survey tool. And then I think when we went back to write the goal, we sort of backwrote the goal from the fact that we felt like the board was expressing that they wanted to see some, they wanted to hear what people were saying about the graduate profile, especially, we originally said parents and students and staff, but in the conversations with the superintendent, we agreed it probably would be hard for parents to really have a sense of those competencies, but it would be the students and staff who could really zero in. So, so yes, it's a, it's a good observation that the goal is task oriented, but I think that's because our conversation was written around getting to an end and the task is how we get to that survey piece.
Okay, thank you. Director Marvin?
Yeah, and I'm really pleased that we have this kind of goal or task in there because I think that the graduate profile is one of the most important things that we have produced in a long time. The idea that we want our students to be ethical contributors, resilient learners, and critical thinkers, success ready, not just what they know, but who they are and what they can do. My question is, under the evidence of performance for both 3.1 and 3.2, where we're going to survey students and staff on the competencies for the graduate profile, both first semester and second semester, are we, do we mean by that that we're going to ask them, have you, teachers, have you provided pedagogy which is challenging for your students in that it causes them to think critically and to be success ready to connect it? Have you been doing that? Are we going to ask our students, have you been receiving that kind of teaching and those kind of experiences in class? Or are we going to be asking students at the end of first semester and the end of second semester, are you a more resilient learner, a more critical thinker, a more success ready individual? Because I think it's two different things. I'm not sure how we measure critical thinker, you know, we can ask the kids, what do you, what do you think? Do you feel like you're better at that now? But I'm not sure that a semester is really enough time for them to determine if they've changed over the course of a year. So I'm not sure exactly what we're looking for in that, in those two performance pieces.
Yeah, and I think timing, I think timing is a consideration because, of course, when we first had this conversation, it was August, beginning of the year. So I think the original intent was sort of like a pre and post test, that was the phrase, I think we
you, teachers, have you provided pedagogy which is challenging for your students, in that it causes them to think critically, and to be success-ready, to connect it? Have you been doing that? Are we going to ask our students, have you been receiving that kind of teaching and those kind of experiences in class? Or are we going to be asking students at the end of first semester and the end of second semester, are you a more resilient learner, a more critical thinker, a more success-ready individual? Because I think it's two different things. I'm not sure how we measure critical thinker. You know, we can ask the kids, what do you, what do you think? Do you feel like you're better at that now? But I'm not sure that a semester is really enough time for them to determine if they've changed over the course of a year. So, I'm not sure exactly what we're looking for in that, in those two performance pieces.
Yeah, and I think timing, I think timing is a consideration, because of course, when we first had this conversation, it was August, beginning of the year. So, I think the original intent was sort of like a pre-and post-test. That was the phrase, I think, we talked about at the study session. It would have been nice to see where teachers felt their students were, and where students themselves felt they were at the beginning of the year, versus where they felt they were at the end of the year. And I, I think personally, I saw it as like a self-assessment by students, and a teacher assessment of student skills, without using those words that we use in the graduate profile, but perhaps terms that are more operationalized what they mean, kind of like what we do with the panorama survey and social-emotional learning. But you make a good point, Director Marvin, about, you know, even asking if the students are aware that they're receiving instruction that are connected to each of these areas might be an important first step. If they're not even aware of what the graduate profile is, or what the components are, we may have to go over that hurdle before we can get to the self-assessment piece, because that shows, I think, a deeper level of understanding that our students may not have yet.
Thank you.
The other thing I'd like to point out, too, and Director Marvin, I don't think this is where you were going with it, is that this is the survey, the development of the survey, and how it's presented, and what exactly is being measured or looked for, that's up to the superintendent. He will create and administer the survey on the graduate profile skills and components. So, I'm assuming that he would be collaborating with cabinet principals, maybe some teachers as well, to find out, you know, what do you think is important to be on this survey? What do we really want to zero in on? He may take another different approach. But I, we were trying to leave it as broad as possible, to give him as much flexibility as possible, because, you know, he's the one who knows the district, and knows where everybody's at. So, I just thought I'd throw that in.
Okay, and thank you for that. That's good to know, because it's frustrating if we're thinking, okay, we want to know this stuff, and the superintendent and cabinet interpret it as, well, we're going to look for this stuff. So, I think having, providing that leeway and that autonomy for our staff to determine what information would really be useful to them, I think that's smart.
I think it's also recognize, important to recognize that this is the first time we've tried to do something like this. So, an imperfect product at the beginning just gives us a chance to revise and improve for following years. So, I don't want to say that our expectations are low, because our expectations for our students are always high, but I would say that our expectations are flexible and realistic, I would hope.
Okay. Yeah, my little note on here was similarly, like how, and then survey language, and then I also had a, my little red pen, you know, maybe a focus group instead of a survey or something, you know, again, like you said, that could be determined, but might be a little easier to have a conversation than a survey, but that can come later. Okay, anything else, board members? I will add anecdotally, I was on a webinar, oh, and this, it's been a little while ago, and Kathy, Kathy was on the, I think I hit the first part of the webinar, and Kathy hit the second part of the webinar, and then I went back and watched the whole thing from NSBA, NSBA, on data-driven budgeting. And, you know, the, I think the frustrating things about that, it was really a fascinating group of folks from across the country, board members and superintendents, and people who work at NSBA and Equity. But, you know, and one of the questions for the panel was, how can we use data for this year, you know, with a once-in-a-lifetime issue? And, you know, somebody responded, well, that's a tough question. Yes, it's a tough question. That's why it was asked. So, I guess I was a little, I did appreciate it, but, you know, I felt like they were a little, someone talked about access and computers, somebody talked about, you know, some other things that we've kind of already gotten to. And so, I kind of felt like it was a good conversation, but it wasn't super insightful of things that we maybe haven't thought of yet, which was, you know, that piece was a little disappointing. But, but I did think, yeah, once-in-a-lifetime year to try and gather data to evaluations is really, it's really, it's going to be tough, so.
And I think we tried to keep that in mind as we were having our conversations, and I think the board did a good job at the study session, too, in terms of suggestions, you know, monitoring what's happening from the federal level, and what we have or have not heard from the state, for example, in things like the world's best workforce. I think it's good not to wait for the directives from those organizations, because I think that it'll be at a different level than the kind of information that our superintendent and cabinet and principals are already using on the ground to make the day-to-day decisions. So, I think a lot of the metrics that will grow out of this work will come from the day-to-day decisions they've been making, but it'll give us a chance to formalize them in a set of metrics that may turn out to be better than anything that the state or the feds even require us to collect, because it's about us.
Right. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Okay, well, I thank the committee for working on this, and you have more work to do. Do you have any timeframe ideas about when folks will see the next pieces? It's okay if you don't, just that I have, because I know they're coming.
Yeah, I think we have to connect with the superintendent again, because we'd like to have a chance to have a, we walked through the evaluation rubric, but wanted to give him a chance to read it through, because it's a pretty complicated crosswalk between those MSBA standards and the rubric, and the job description. So, I think we'd set up a time to talk to him about that, and then we can schedule another briefing item for a board meeting.
Okay, super. Director Workman.
Yeah, one of the reasons we're having this meeting tonight is because we didn't get to this at our last meeting, because we felt that time was on the essence. So, if nobody else has any comments, I'd like to move it to action.
Second, Amundson.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. I have to get my partner over here ready. Okay, Ms. Edgar.
Sammanson.
Hi.
Mr. Barlow.
Hi.
Marvin.
Hi.
Ms. Nathan.
Hi.
Stusner.
Hi.
Chair Selinger.
Hi.
Ms. Workman.
Hi.
Great, it is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the superintendent goals and evidence for the evaluation framework 2020, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Edgar.
Ms. Amundson.
Hi.
Barlow.
Hi.
Ms. Marvin.
Hi.
Ms. Nathan.
Hi.
Mr. Stusner.
Hi.
Chair Selinger.
Hi.
Ms. Workman.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to Approval of School Board Governance Committee, 710. This is a briefing item. I will turn it over to Ms. Amundson and Ms. Workman to present. Sorry, 702, not 710.
I can go ahead and start, unless Ms. Amundson would rather, because she's shaking her head no, so I guess that means me. So, I'd like to just review a couple of things about this committee. We got this idea from the NSBA, an NSBA session originally. We looked at other district governance, other districts' governance committees. We thought about the amount of responsibility that's currently placed on the chair, such as calendar communications, agenda meetings, et cetera. We felt it would be helpful if we could upload some of this to the governance committee to work on as needed, but also to make us function better, and to really focus on policy, policy governance, the governance of ourselves, and the governance work that the board would do, as opposed to many of our policies now are directly related with the, you know, how the school district functions. So, this is a little bit different look at it. So, I asked, we asked for any emails with edits, concerns, or questions, recommendations, and I did not receive any, Ms. Amundson, did you? So, these policies would be developed over time. The policy committee is already reviewing all the current policies over three years, and it's not intended, this is not intended to take on the role of other committees. And the committee membership would include a person from the policy committee, the chair or vice chair, and a third person. So, there would be a lot of communication between the exec committee, the governance committee, and then other committees as needed.
Okay, excuse me. So, I think, I'm assuming you're ready to open up for discussion?
Sure.
I was not at the original meeting where this was presented, and so, I will just start off by saying I had quite a few questions about the items that are listed in the charge statement. I don't know if, you know, if you want to take them singularly or as a group. Some of the items, I really didn't have any, I wasn't sure what the meaning of the item was, and some of them, I believe, are, some of the items, I really feel, are full board responsibility, and I don't really support them being taken on or taken out to be taken care of by a separate committee. So, I guess I don't know how you would like me to give you some specific questions.
I think it would make sense to go item by item, because if there's going to be revisions to it, then it would make sense to come to consensus on each item one by one.
Okay. Director Marvin.
Thank you. I don't want to usurp your questions of these things, but you've provided 18, I think, really important issues that the board needs to consider. These are all important items involving governance, involving how we function. I think this is a great list, and I think we have to take them very seriously. And thank you, because this is work, it's great to have this all-in-one document. My concern, I think, is that it seems to me that if the board is going to function better, we need to look at governance of ourselves. These are items that the entire board should take more seriously. And I'm wondering if, rather than having a committee, if we could be more intentional about ensuring these things get done, of determining who is going to be doing what here, that maybe we could have, once a quarter, twice a year, whatever, meetings where an important agenda item, or even a whole study session were, how are we functioning as committees? Not just what are we doing, but you're, one of your first things is, let's set up a yearly calendar. I think that's brilliant. And let's make sure we put things on there, like, when do we need to evaluate the superintendent? How are we going to get that done? How are we going to onboard new board members? How are we going to look at our committee structure and decide, do we need some changes there? My concern about having a three-person committee is that it's, I think it would be kind of easy then for everybody else to sort of see that responsibility to those three folks. And these are things, so many of them, I think, that every single board member needs to take really seriously. So, I absolutely support what you have here. My question is, what is best done by a three-person committee?
Do you want to respond to that, or would you like me to go on to Director Barlow?
I'd like to respond to that. So, I don't disagree with anything Director Marvin just said, but I think, you know, as was pointed out, it's 18 different items, and certainly, a lot of them do not need to be done by the entire board at once during a meeting. That's really a problem. We have really long meetings, as it is now. And so, being able to offload some of the work to three people who can get it going, you'll notice, you know, the word choices are important. Director Marvin, as an English teacher, formerly, you would appreciate the number of times we consulted the thesaurus to try to find just the right word. So, I'll give you an example, Item J, initiate and oversee the goal-setting and strategic planning processes. That does not mean that strategic planning would not happen with the whole board, but somebody has to do the work to, you know, pull together the materials, and initiate a meeting and those types of things. So, initiate and oversee would be more of a facilitation of that process, rather than those three people do the work themselves. It's making sure it comes before the board, and it's got the people to do the work, because, as you pointed out, it's 18 items. We can't reasonably expect the chair to take on all those, those things, on top of the agenda setting and the exec committee meetings, and the communication with the stakeholders and the media, and all the really heavy load that the chair carries already. This is just a way to assist with those types of administrative tasks that need to be done. So, I certainly, though, support what you say, if this is, if there are certain ones of these that should not be done by a three-person committee, let's edit the document and remove those. But I would assume that you would not argue that something like getting the, the school board section of the school district website, that that should not come to us as a seven-person, board during a regular meeting and make our meetings even longer? I'm assuming that is not one of the items that you were concerned about?
Well, I mean, that's not a primary concern of mine, but it just seems to me, you know, something like that, something like, well, like this year, for instance, that when we're talking about the superintendent's evaluation, you three did a great job with that. And I'm thinking, depending on where people are, and what their other committee assignments are, it may be a different three people or two people in coming years. And I don't know that that needs to be a committee's assignment every year. I think we could spread these out among board members.
Well, the superintendent evaluation does happen every year, so maybe that should be a separate standing committee, I don't know.
Well, could it be a committee, or could it be just one year, those on the policy committee do it, one year, those on the long-range planning committee do it, or just three people who volunteer, like the three of you did? I'm just thinking with that, and then with the, you know, recommending school board professional development, and, you know, sort of checking in with the policy work, and, again, onboarding new board members. I think that a lot of us could step up more individually, and if we would have that discussion, and I certainly don't want to be talking about 18 items every time, but how are our committees working? I think that would be a great discussion to have, once a year anyway, with the entire board. Do we want to look at having different Do we want to look at having different committees? Do we have any that we don't need anymore? And I don't know that we need to turn that over to a separate committee, I just.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but again, you know, the words recommend come up a lot, so it's, the committee could have the discussion, and when they see an issue, bring it to the larger board.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that you're looking at the verbs there, but the thing is, right now, any board member can do that. And I guess the concern is that if we just assume that each of us individually won't need to do so much to be so aware, because three other people are taking care of it, and I don't know that that would happen. But I'm thinking, right now, many of these things are the responsibilities of every single board member, and we should, I think, take that responsibility really seriously. Okay, I've talked too much, there are a lot of other hands.
Thank you, Director Marvin. I'm just, I'm only going to go to Director Barlow because he had his hand up and he put it down. Director Barlow, do you want to jump in here, or would you like me to start the list?
I'll just briefly jump in. And whereas, I appreciate the effort of the three individuals who had the fore sight to consider this undertaking, and maybe, for me, it, as a former, it's easy to become frustrated with, not overwhelmed by what we do, but let me, not overwhelmed by what we have to do, but perhaps overwhelmed by how we do what it is we need to do. And so I, I think the ad hoc committee has done their part and presented this as a, something for us to think about. I don't necessarily do this as an opportunity to expand what they thought about, but I see it more so as an opportunity for further discussion and clarity. And so I'm definitely listening to hear more information as we move forward.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Nathan.
Thank you, Chair Seelinger. So as I read the materials that were provided by the ad hoc committee, and I hear some of the conversations, I guess I, I guess I read the 18 items a little differently in that I saw the governance committee as being the person who keeps the train on the track, moving towards the station, as opposed, and then bringing that work to the board when, when it's time for the board to deliberate and act and be informed and consider. So I guess I didn't see the, and I could have been wrong, but I don't see the governance committee necessarily independently taking on all of these tasks, although I do agree there could be some tasks that they could undertake independently and simply report to the board. But I saw a lot of these tasks as saying, you know, here's the, here's the, I shouldn't use, here's the sourdough starter on this topic, and now it's time for the board to bake the bread. Sorry, I just bought sourdough starter the other day, so it's in my head. So maybe it might help clarify it, because I think I heard Director Amundson say that the words were chosen to reflect that connection to the full board work. So I don't know if it would be helpful for each task to specifically say how it would then be brought to the board, or how the full board would then work off of the governance committee's guidance and, and organization, if you will, versus those things where it would be reported to the board about the work. So that's just how I read it. Again, I'd love some clarification, but I think that might take into account what I've been hearing.
Director Schuster.
I, two questions. The first one was, is of course this would be another committee, potentially, for the board that would have a normal committee rotation of folks, right? So that's just more of a thought or comment. But then building off of, actually what Director Nathan just said, that just, in my mind, greatly confuses things of if it's just keeping the train on the tracks and bringing things to the board, and I read the things that, you know, read the words of the document, it does look like there's a lot of work, you know, create an annual school board meeting, coordinate professional development, establish policy governance, conduct annual school board. Those are a lot of action items in the document versus recommend, remind, coordinate with the board. So just clarification on what we are being told and what is in the document. And to build a little bit on Dr. Marvin's notes, is, you know, as I'm rolling off my time here on the school board, you know, one of the things that I would recommend from a committee point of view is that, while we are always given the opportunity to discuss what has gone on in committee meetings, I've found it exceedingly inefficient and unproductive to just have a recommendation versus going down a roster of, okay, in the last month, these committees have met, you know, what is the written or verbal outcome of those meetings? Because I can tell you a number of times of frustration on my part of knowing some great stuff was going on in committees and never getting word on what any of it was. Huge disservice to the board when committees don't report out what's going on in the boards.
Thank you, Director Schuster. I have currently only Director Nathan with a hand up, and now Director Workman. Director Workman, you're on my screen, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, just to respond to what Director Schuster said, using point C, conduct an annual school board self-evaluation process. Once again, we're not going to be inventing the process, creating the process. We used a process relatively recently with MSBA, so it would be a question of, okay, it's time for our annual school board self-evaluation process to be set up. We know we need to probably let MSBA know about six weeks in advance of when we would like to ha, like it to happen. The entire board doesn't need to do that. So as Director Nathan said, that's one of the things of keeping committees, or of keeping the train on the track. As for the committees, I think, you know, that's kind of covered in this document as well, in terms of creating a calendar of, okay, these are the committees that have met this month, or, and having something that's a little bit more informal rather, or a little more formalized than, oh, did anybody have a committee this month, kind of thing, which is kind of the way we've been doing it since, in the 10 years that I've been on the board. So I don't know if that helps at all. Once again, I think when Director Amundson and I were discussing this and looking at other districts, many of which have governance committees, and taking the best things that we could find from them, as well as from NSBA and others, is that in order for a board to function well at a high-performance level, I think it's really helpful to have a committee like this in place. It wouldn't necessarily have to encompass all of these things, and all of these things wouldn't necessarily be done every single year, but it's much, it's a broader, it's a broader list of what we think that the board needs to be working on, because quite frankly, I think, I feel that this just has not been happening in any kind of a well-organized, intentional way, and that the school board is not to be primarily focused on, to use this as my usual example, okay, when do the melt bids come in and we vote on it? You know, that almost doesn't need to be on our agenda, and for those of you who are around, when Dennis Cheeseborough was here, he used those kinds of things as an example. But, you know, what is the work of the board? What is it we're supposed to be focusing on? Student achievement. And yet, if you look at any one of our agendas, most of them are housekeeping kinds of things. So I think personally, this would be a good committee to kind of start to line some of that up. Obviously, if there are people on the board who have a very different philosophical view of what the board should be doing, you know, coming in, we'll approve the melt bids, we're out the door, we're done, yeah, it'll be a lot of work. You know, and rather than assigning people to this committee, you'd have to have some volunteers do it, because it is a lot of work, and it is a huge commitment. But I think we really owe it to our students and the community to really focus in on what our real role is. So I'll get off my soapbox for a moment.
Thank you. So this is the way I look at it, and I don't know, apologies if you sent other backup information that I just didn't see or whatever, but, you know, I had a discussion with MSBA about this, and, you know, the person I talked to had never heard of a governance committee, that this was not a typical scenario for school boards in Minnesota. Doesn't mean they don't exist. When I look at this list, I think there's a lot of things, you know, the things that you've brought up, the self-evaluation process, you know, really the self-evaluation process is, the board decides they want the self-evaluation process, and our admin calls to make arrangements to have the self-evaluation process. I don't see that we have to have a separate committee to do that work. Something like, develop and update the school board section of the school district website. I can see maybe making suggestions on information that we would like on the school board, on our tab. Updating the actual site, that's a staff job, that's not our job as school board members. Recommend and coordinate professional development, typically done via the executive committee. Our professional development has largely been MSBA, NSBA, and other opportunities that have come before us through those organizations. So I'm really not seeing the, I guess I'm really not seeing it. I'll be honest, I'm not seeing the need for this committee. I think work does get done, work can be done, and formation of another committee, I think, is just really making, is short-sighted in terms of actually working on some of these items. I think it just adds another layer. Director Nathan.
So as I look at some of these tasks, and having just gone through the process of developing the superintendent goals and doing the research behind it from the source documents, I see a few of these tasks as being the advanced team, if you will. Again, and I'll let the ad hoc committee who worked on it correct me, but I did not see any of these tasks as this committee operating in lieu of the entire board. But we don't, we have, but, we have no one to do the background work and the research, except as people volunteer for it. So for example, we had the policy governance book study that Director Marvin led, and we talked about many things that we could do, and we talked about many things that would be nice, but we have no place for that work to live, so that we can make sure that we're continuing to evolve in our effectiveness as a board. So when I look at these tasks, I agree with you. I wouldn't want to be the person responsible for doing the coding on the website, but I think that responsibility has to live somewhere, and I think I've heard Director Marvin say, well, we can, you know, assign it to individual board members, but to have a identified place and space and individuals who have a list that we can all agree on, I mean, I think I heard everybody say, these tasks are important for us or someone to do. So the conversation we're really having right now is, who is, who are the people who are going to do these? And if not a governance committee, then who? And how are we going to assign those tasks? And how are we going to hold people responsible for getting them done? Because I think all of these things, as Director Marvin said, we have to do, and we should do them on an annual basis, but how do we get there? So if not this, then what?
Well, I guess my question, you know, to that is, then how have they been getting done, or how do other districts get it done without such a committee? Melissa and then Julie.
All right, I'm going back several speakers ago to try to remember everybody's points. As Director Workman pointed out, it's a long list because we did a lot of research of other districts do for managing themselves, and yes, it was not just in Minnesota, because Google doesn't give me a option to just say, only show me, you know, hits from Minnesota. But it was great, a great learning experience to see how other boards operate, and this did come from an idea at NSBA, not MSBA, you know, from, from a more global practice. Maybe we're a little inbred in Minnesota, I don't know, but also, as one of the larger districts, you know, top seven, I think, are we seventh largest? I can, I can see why smaller districts in Minnesota wouldn't be needing a governance committee, because they don't have nearly as much business as a larger district. So I'm not sure that that's an accurate way to go. Interestingly, to Director Schuster's point about committee reports, I came across school districts who submit their committee minutes, and I was thinking to myself, wow, that would be great, just as Director Schuster said, I would love to have a more regular way of hearing what's happening from different committees, and in that way, maybe we wouldn't spend as much time during board meetings, having to go through details that could be read in the committee minutes. So that might be something that we can look towards as well. But back to the idea of it's such a long list, because we drew material from various sources, and so it is sort of a long list of, you know, hey, wouldn't it be great if we did this? Hey, wouldn't it be great if we did that? But I would draw everybody's attention back to item D, which is the whole reason that this committee was born of the need to develop a separate set of policies, not the ones that come from MSBA, although I do believe they might have model documents for policy governance, if I'm recalling correctly. But that is a whole, large responsibility, that if we took the other 17 items off, then it would become, you know, a one-time, this is a one-time task, to develop the set of the model policies for policy governance, and then, you know, that could at that point be handed over to the policy committee, and of course, they already do a lot of work, so it might be wise to leave that for a separate set of people, so they're not so overwhelmed. But I would agree with Director Nathan, that assigning these types of tasks, to get them started off down the track and make sure that they stay on the track, is well-trusted to a set of people, instead of just one person who might be overwhelmed with the other work. So I would just echo that there's a lot of work to be done, it's all important work, as Director Marvin said, and to me, it deserves the formalization. Maybe not every single item, like I said, we could, we could look at them item by item, and, you know, say that's not really appropriate, or that is, because this was more of a compilation of excellent things that other districts do. It's not necessarily intended to be all must-haves, just a lot of nice-to-have. It's not necessarily intended to be all must-haves, just a lot of nice-to-haves.
Director Workman?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody that three is not a quorum. Any committee that we have on this board cannot make any decisions independent of being approved by the full board. So if anybody here is, I don't know how to say this for not sounding, well, if anybody is fearing that there's going to be a governance committee that where it's going to be a hostile takeover of the board and ordering the board around, that is not going to happen. It can't happen. That's not its intent. And you know, when we, when I hear people saying, well, yes, we should do this or we should do that, that. In my introduction tonight, I mentioned that we had asked for any input, you know, you've had time to look at the document. That meeting was on October 6th, which is almost two months ago. We didn't give you an end date for, okay, this is when we would like to have your comments back. So I'm very glad that we're having this discussion now. And we had also anticipated that we would be getting to this more detailed discussion a whole lot sooner. But as I go through some of our past school board meeting videos, it's like, oh, we've dropped this, we've dropped this, we've dropped this. Certainly, a calendar would be helpful to keep track of stuff, things that just, for whatever reason, all seem to get lost by the wayside.
Can you say more about that, Director Workman? I don't know what you mean by we've dropped this and we've dropped this and dropped this.
Well, somebody will, let me see if I have a specific example. Okay, so one of our, one of our board members said at this meeting, we have time to receive input, we would like time to review it and send thoughts. Okay, you know, that didn't happen, but I'm thinking of other, other meetings in which a board member will make some kind of a suggestion and it's like, yeah, we should do that. And then we never seem to follow up. So certainly not everything, it's not like it happens every single meeting, but to me, it seems like there are an awful lot of loose ends that could be tied together a little bit better to help us function more efficiently and effectively and collaboratively.
Director Barlow?
So I told myself I would spend more time listening. Certainly, while it is true, back in October, these things were initially presented, we, no board member was under any mandate or requirement to have provided information, especially when we have opportunity to enter the public arena and to publicly share our thoughts as we're doing now. And so I think that is very important to honor that always. Additionally, I have thought of sending an inquiry to the chair, vice chair earlier, well, earlier this week, I guess yesterday, to see clarity in terms of, well, just because one board member suggests something or quotes an idea, does that then mean, oh, that's something the board is going to do? And so I would like, you know, the opportunity because I think some of us may be thinking that just because we ask for something or think it's a pretty good idea, or maybe even one or two may think, oh, I agree with that, does that automatically mean then that, oh, the board, it becomes a board action, the board is in agreement? There have been several conversations where there have been attempts to, if you will, on the part of cabinet and/or superintendent to maybe even canvass the board. Well, is this what the board in its entirety may think or feel, you know, based on the request of a individual board meeting? So yes, there is work to be done, most definitely. So I tend to lean more along the lines of what Director Marvin has said, yeah, we need to step it up. Okay, can we do a better job? Yes, we can. And do we need to do a better job? Most definitely. And so I'm looking forward to, if I hear anything, I'm hearing that, yeah, there are, be it 18 items or however many number of items there are, these reflect opportunities for us to do a better job. And if the question is, are we willing to commit ourselves to do a better job? Then I for one say yes. And then how do we do that? Okay? Do we necessarily need a committee? Now I'm being repetitious, others have said this already, but yes. Am I in support of these ideas? Yes. And I look forward to the board, you know, putting on its full mantle and moving forth to accomplish these things.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Yeah, I think I would, I guess I'm still not quite sure what Director Workman's list of things that have gotten lost or untied is, but I think when, in the fall of 2019, we had a study session and we tried to talk about what at that time we called the parking list and the hopper and some of those ideas and what do we do when one board member says, well, what about this or we'd like this, which, and that from that became the future topics list that's on our regular meetings. And so that was one way to try to have our kind of to-do follow-up type list available to work off of. So that answered some of those questions. Director Workman?
Okay, as I've been kind of mulling over what you were asking about, I can give you some examples. For example, we're really be, we are really behind on the superintendent evaluation process, which was started in August. We don't set annual goals for ourselves, which was one thing that we had talked about. We have one protocol document, the communications ones, and those were at loose ends for a long time. Item G on this list says, ensure compliance to requirements dictated in policy 104, including initiating an annual review of the mission as well as periodic comprehensive review of the mission while including the beliefs and values of the community. I don't remember if that's the direct language from, from the policy, but it's there. So just keeping track of some of those board responsibility policies has to fall to either a person or a group of people who could then go ahead and share some of that work rather than it's falling all on one person. To address what Don just said, is that it's some of our board meetings, it's been a question of, you know, a board member will suggest that and it just sits there rather than kind of going around the table and finding out, do we have a consensus that we want to move forward with this? So I mean, I think we could, an easy start for some of this would be to start at our board meeting. And for example, if a board member says, well, I think I would really like to see blah, blah, blah. And then maybe people don't respond, it just sits there. I think we need to be intentional about, okay, how does the rest of you feel? You know? And we might go around the board table and six other people might say, nah, I, we don't need that. Okay, fine. But the silence, you know, does the silence mean that yes, this needs to be discussed at length? Does the silence mean no, nobody said anything? So I think, I think we really need to be more intentional about, about some of that. I don't, I probably just muddied the waters with what I've said, but I gave it the old college try.
I have Director Nathan and then Director Amundson.
So as I hear the conversation and I hear this focus on following up on issues and suggestions that board members bring up at meetings, as I look at this list of 18 items, I really only see that addressed in one, which is track items identified for follow-up at school board meetings. We still have 17 items and, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't heard anybody say that we shouldn't be doing these 17, these 18 items. So I'm still struggling with the dismissal of the necessity of identifying a consistent, semi-permanent, permanent location to organize the insurance that these 18 items happen. So we seem to be getting into the detail about tracking the items and that at meetings we don't come to consensus and maybe that's an entirely separate conversation about how we interact with each other at board meetings so that at the end of the board meeting, we know exactly what we've agreed upon and what we haven't agreed upon. But I'm still, I'm still, I'm still hearing some of my fellow board members say, we don't need anybody to do this work, but everybody agrees that the work needs to be done. So I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna ask for suggestions from those people who don't think it should be done through a governance committee, where we think that the work might happen and who's gonna coordinate, who is doing what, when, and how it might eventually get to the board when it needs to come before the board for discussion and approval.
Director Schlussner?
Yeah, as Don said, you know, I've been sitting here listening to the discussion. It's been a lot of really good discussion. And I guess a recommendation, kind of based off of something that Director Workman had said with approving the melt budget, is, you know, if with a different board, I was recently through a strategic planning meeting for a different nonprofit. And one of the suggestions there was, and I think it would very much apply here as well, is while the board may need to approve the melt budget, push things like that to the consent agenda so these discussions that are going on tonight can be had and the meetings are not five or six hours long. You know, when you have annual things like that, that are just, they need to be approved, they don't need to be talked about, but even approving the melt budget takes 10 minutes, that time adds up. And, and yes, it needs to get done, but everything being discussed tonight also needs to get done and there is only so much time in the day.
Director Workman?
Yes, I feel like we're getting into the weeds, but I'd like to address what Director Schlussner just said about, I believe that Chair Seelinger might have been on the board by then, but it's been maybe six, seven, maybe even eight years ago, we would brief an item and the next meeting, that same item would show up as a specific thing on the agenda and then we would have another complete discussion about it all over again. And at that time, we agreed, okay, this item has been briefed. The next time around, it goes on the consent agenda. If anybody wants to bring it out off and discuss it, we can. So that was one way we improved some of the efficiency of our meetings. But I think, I'm not sure that that's really what the purpose of the governance policy or the governance committee would be, except to, well, to get back to what Director Nathan says, make sure things are streamlined and on track and we know what month things are going to happen, there are going to be some recurring things that happen. But the most important thing from my perspective is that we establish and maintain a set of policy governance model documents. And that is going to take a lot of work. I don't expect that it will be done in one year. And obviously, if the rest of the board doesn't want to do that, then I guess it doesn't get done. But, you know, if we agree that some of these things need to get done, the next question is how? How do they get done? Who's responsible for getting them done and when? I just need to have a little bit more, a little bit better idea sequentially of how things are going to happen and how we are going to make sure that we cover the things that we need to.
Go ahead, Director Marvin.
Thank you. You know, item F on this document, create an annual school board planning calendar and track items requiring action, recommending agenda items to the executive committee. I think that's brilliant. I think that's something we absolutely have to do. And if we had a committee that did that, I could absolutely support that. But everything else, my opinion, could go on that calendar. It's just, this is when we need to do self-evaluation, this is when we should talk about school board professional development and anyone on the board can bring that. I mean, if that were the kind of thing that at every meeting, we talked about what's on our calendar, superintendent evaluation, strategic plan, community engagement, school board academy, onboarding new board members. I'm all about that, having that calendar that we keep in front of the entire board, even if we do it at every meeting. What are we missing? What are we gonna need to do? Who's gonna do that? I think that's great, but that way, depending on who's on our board, any given year, we would be able to have people say, yep, I'll do that or this committee will do that. And I think that way, we ensure that the entire school board is responsible for making sure that we run smoothly. I think once a year, we should have a discussion about, do we have the right committees? I've looked, for instance, as Ms. Amundson said, at districts who have a governance committee, not Minnesota, but other places. And that seems to work, but their other committees are very different from the ones we have. Well, maybe we need to look at that. Do we need a policy committee and a long-range planning committee and a community engagement committee? Or do we go the direction that districts who have a governance committee go? But I really feel that that should be the whole board discussion. And I'm wondering if we could sort of get this, agree that what we really need is a school board calendar and that sort of keeps everybody, every committee, every board member on track.
Thank you, Jean. I'd like to circle back to item D, which is establish and maintain a set of policy governance model documents. So, you know, the explanation for where this committee came from was from a workshop that some folks attended at NSBA. And coming back from that, suggested reading the book that we did in book study last year. You know, I guess it doesn't matter if I tell you my dirty secret now, I hated that book. I thought it was a terrible book. I was not at all interested in having policy governance model documents, but we never really resolved that and have moved forward since then. Part of this feels like, you know, to me, it's a lot of make-work. It's a lot of make-work that I think could be done in a lot more streamlined fashion. When I think about the development that I have done and I know you have all done similarly, you know, I look at the books that I've used over the last few years, key work of school boards, guidebook from NSBA, Becoming a Better School Board Member, also from NSBA, Engaging Collective Will for Student Success, this is my Stephen Lamb, everybody knows I love Stephen Lamb. And then this year, I've been referring to the Governance Core. This has been my bible this year. To me, it would be a lot more beneficial for this board to do some hard work about high-functioning boards and what you need to, the characteristics of those and work towards those as opposed to arguing over who's gonna do what work and knowing it all has to be done. and knowing it all has to be done. I just think this is, I think you're setting yourself up for, you know, really more circling the drain discussion, honestly. Director Barlow and then Director Nathan.
Thank you for those words, Chair Seelinger. They mean a lot. And I just wanted to ask, if I may, Director Workman, who may be our senior, not based on age, but longest-serving member on the school board. You had mentioned earlier 10 years. And I believe of those 10 years, you served as chair twice. And so I guess my question is, do these 18 items, is it your experiential belief, having served on Rochester Public School Board for 10 years and as chair for two of those years and vice-chair I don't know how many times, that this is an area, a deficit area we have? And that by, whether it's in the name of an ad hoc committee or governance committee, these are needs that this board, that the board, since you've been a part of it, has had and continues to have a struggle with?
I don't know. Did you want me to respond to that right away, Chair Seelinger?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would say a lot of them are. This is hard for me to say. I'll try and be very, very general. Every two years, generally, the makeup of the board has changed. And some years, it was like herding cats to get even some of the basic kinds of things done that we needed to do. You know, if a future board looks at a governance committee and says, you know, "We don't need that," I don't have a problem with that because every board has to decide what it needs in order to function. But when people are not philosophically on the same page, then it really makes it difficult to get beyond, sorry, get beyond the milk bid and really concentrate on, you know, what is the board supposed to be focusing on? It's student achievement. How do we drive that? How do we make that happen? And I'm all for having a broad discussion, but I, you know, any number of times I've heard, you know, "These meetings are too long." Well, yeah, okay, five hours, yeah, that's long. But there are some things that take time to discuss and to work through. So I don't know if that answered your question at all. I hope at least it did partially.
Director Nathan?
So I wanted to cycle back to what Director Marvin said about the calendar being at the root of a lot of these activities. I agree with what you said, Director Marvin. You know, circling what's on the list, I look at C and E and G and I and J and M and N and O. And if we maybe trying to bring us to some sort of consensus, could we consider an ad hoc governance committee whose first responsibility would be to structure that annual planning calendar and take the items that are on this list that are a combination of scheduling and gathering prep information about? And maybe not gathering the information, but just identifying, like, for when we do this next time, what is the information we need? Or who are the contacts we need to make? And then that calendar structure would be available to the board, as Director Marvin said, to be included in our conversations at the board table when those topics come up by date. The second piece, as I look at what's left on the list, is the issue that Chair Seelinger brought up about the policy governance documents. I am on the opposite side of the spectrum. I thought those policy documents were great. And I'm sure that they are also, could be guided by a lot of the other resources that Chair Seelinger referred to because I think there's some common themes and threads in all of those about high-functioning school boards. So perhaps it's also something for us to consider and maybe not necessarily the governance ad hoc committee. It could be another group of people if they're interested in doing further research on that policy governance structure. There was some really good information about how to get to being a policy governance board, how to get to those policies, how to establish them. So maybe instead of putting all this in one basket, we highlight one or two of those focus areas. I would prioritize personally the annual calendar and seeing how many of these other activities we could fold into it because I really do like the idea of bringing that work forward at a board meeting, both for us all to participate in and for the public to see. Because I think sometimes that's the hidden work of the board that people don't necessarily understand as part of our responsibility.
Thank you. Director Workman?
Okay, this is, I'll give you an analogy that I use when I teach. Sometimes I will say to a student, "Have you ever put a jigsaw puzzle together?" "Yeah, sure." And I said, "We've got some jigsaw puzzles downstairs and I'm going to go get a piece and I'm going to bring it up and I'm going to show it to you. And I want you to tell me what the puzzle is." You might be able, well, it's blue. It might be sky. It might be water. That's a corner piece. Maybe it'll be something else. But you don't know what that piece is all by itself. You have to look at it in its entirety. How do you know what the jigsaw puzzle is about? How do you know where to go? You look at the picture on the box top and then you start putting the pieces together. So I'm looking at these 18 things as a bigger, at that box top picture, that this is showing a much bigger picture of what we need to do. And we're not going to put all the pieces together all at once. We're going to take them one at a time and not be terribly overwhelmed by saying, "Oh, my gosh, we have a thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle here to put together." Well, today, we're just going to work on the corners. Today, we're going to just work on the edges. Today, we're going to sort out pieces by color, looking at where they appear on the box. So that's kind of how I envision this charge statement that we brought before you, that it is complex. It is thorough. It looks terribly overwhelming. But I think that Director Nathan has a good idea as to which piece of the puzzle should we start with. And I could certainly support, create an annual school board planning calendar and track the items requiring action. And as we're moving along, how many of these other pieces can we bring into it to putting a more complete picture together? So I don't know if that's helpful. As I tell my students, if it works for you, use it. If it doesn't, just throw it out because you will anyway.
Oh, it's probably that time when I do some sort of synthesizing, what everything's been said. Give me a moment. So there are a variety of opinions on the creation of a governance committee. I think there's still some unclarity of things that are task-oriented and whose task or duty they are. Some things that require full board participation, understanding that no committee has, what, authority to make decisions on behalf of the board, that we only do that when we are all together virtually or in person, perhaps someday. I think we need to focus on, I think there's a little, no, I don't. I think that there's a little bit of, I don't want to say disagreement because that's not what I meant. In some of this, I feel like we're a solution in search of a problem. I do believe that, for me, good governance is about taking responsibility and accountability for each of ourselves. If there are things on this list that current board members have felt have not been completed this year, if there are things on this list that you have great concerns about not getting done or not being done efficiently, that responsibility lies within each of us to bring them forward. If you have brought them to me as your chair and I have not taken care of them in a manner that was respectful or as wished, I take responsibility for that and I apologize. If there's something on this list that you have been stewing about that didn't get done, that got forgotten, and it never made it to me to discuss at executive committee, I'm sorry, but that lands on you. I think part of doing our self-evaluation every year really helps us reflect on what our role is, not only in governance, but as a school board team. And the team that we create here at the board table, whether we're all together or virtually, is a team that also includes the superintendent and includes the cabinet and includes our soon-to-be-departed, not dearly, not deadly, Ms. Wendy Edgar. But our new clerk coming in will also have to be part of that team. And we really need to count on each other and hold each other accountable, but also do that with respect and grace. Recently, I looked at our last board meetings for the last three years and I calculated the time. And maybe I've shared that with you before. I can't find it in my notes today. The length of our board meetings over the last three years has increased. The number of study sessions over the last three years has increased and the length of those study sessions has increased. I believe that those study sessions are very important. They have produced a lot of good work. I think our self-evaluation work was very good as well. But I also have to remind us, and Kathy will know I say this all the time in PTA, it's not the person, it's the position. And we really have to respect the fact that a school board elected official is a part-time position. And while we may, right now, that this very second, have a lot of people on the board who have a lot of time to spend doing the really hard work, that may not always be the case. And so I want us to also have respect that anyone can come to our board, that they don't have to be a stay-at-home mom or a retired dad or whatever. This job cannot be all-consuming if we want to get representational members to serve. I will now step down from my soapbox and ask if there's any other comments on this item for this evening. Director Nathan?
So given that this was a briefing item this evening, and I don't get the sense that there's a consensus about moving it to action. And there is a resolution that identifies a governance committee, not an ad hoc committee or, you know, it seems like it's at the same level of all of our other committees, the way the resolution is written. If there were to be a proposal for an alternative to a governance committee to a different kind of ad hoc committee, how would we proceed for that, given that this is already a briefing item?
So I'm getting from my sidekick over here that we could vote this down and then someone could come back with another resolution proposal. I'm watching her facial. Another proposal to do, you know, something as you're suggesting, Kathy, perhaps establishing an ad hoc committee with, you know, perhaps a tighter, let's just say tighter, charge statement or something. I feel like that's, am I capturing your thoughts and what you've said?
Yeah, and I just want to check with our off-camera expert. Is there also an option to amend the resolution?
Yes, that's possible. Director Marvin has her hand up.
I do. And Director Nathan, I think the idea of an ad hoc committee, in particular, to create a calendar, I absolutely think is an amazing compromise here. So, thank you.
Director Workman?
Yes. The resolution says, "Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the charge statement of the governance committee." So does that mean that, I don't think we've already approved having a governance committee. This is asking to approve the charge statement of the governance committee. And I think those two things could be separate, that once we establish a governance committee, then we review what's on this list, modify it, maybe have future discussion, and then bring back an edited version or a completely new one or something that's just limited to a couple of things to, you know, vote on it then. I certainly did not have any expectation that this was going to be moved to action tonight. And if it is, then I would prefer to change the language to eliminate charge statement and say, "Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the formation," or, that's not the right word, "of the governance committee." So that we're leaving it more open-ended. And once again, we don't have to do anything with that tonight. As a matter of fact, I think it's probably maybe better if we don't.
I would say I'm not in favor of leaving it open-ended. And I'm just looking back at September meeting. We had an approval of an ad hoc committee briefing item for the evaluation committee. And this is written the same, "Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School 535 does hereby approve the charge statement of the evaluation committee." So I think the language is consistent with what we've used in the past.
I'm still not clear. We're not, well, the superintendent evaluation, that was an ad hoc committee for this one thing. And what we approved tonight was the Superintendent Goals and Evidence for the Evaluation Framework 2020-21. This resolution is different in that it's asking to approve the charge statement of the, let me have to pull it up on Board Docs again. This one's different. It does hereby approve the charge statement of the governance committee. So I'm not sure what that means. If it means we have this charge statement that we've approved, but do we have a governance committee then? You know, we've had a lot of suggestions from people tonight. My inclination might be to bring it back with a lot of edits. And I'm not commanding anyone to provide any more input. If you're so inclined, that would be great. Maybe to narrow the scope of this one down, focus on Item F, which was create an annual school board planning calendar and track items requiring action, as Director Nathan mentioned a minute ago. So I'm not sure where we're at.
May I ask another procedure question? So, if we don't make it, if we just finish our conversation tonight and then leave the board meeting, at the next meeting, would it be possible for someone to bring revised wording for the resolution? Would it automatically come back as an action item, or could it be continued as a briefing item so that that change can be made, or can that be made when something's an action item?
Thank you. All right, so, trying to finish the questions. Yes, we don't have to do anything with this tonight. It would come back next time as a briefing item. However, I think what we're trying to get at is, these are not separate things. We are not going to be approving a governance committee, and at some later date, approving a charge statement of a committee, that they go hand-in-hand, and so they will have to go together. And so obviously, not obviously, the resolution as written is approving the charge statement of the governance committee, which does not seem to have, well, you know, I mean, we could certainly vote and see what happens, or we could do some alternative... We could bring it back differently. Probably best would be to vote this down and bring back something differently, instead of bringing it back and then trying to massage it. Thanks. Okay. Melissa?
So, I'm struggling with... My brain is still turning, and you called on me so quickly that it wasn't done turning. So, what I heard Director Marvin say, and a lot of people echo, is that some sort of a calendar would be useful. If we were to take that as a first step, and I don't think this is something that would have to be voted upon to establish anything, just that there would be volunteers to work on it and bring it back, once that process was done, it might better inform us as to what the tasks will be on the calendar, and then it might make sense to go through that type of annual calendar, task by task, as a board, as a full board, and decide which people or committees would be responsible for each item. At the end of that process, it might become clear to us that some sort of a committee should be established to take the unclaimed items, if that makes sense, right? So, step one, volunteers put together calendars. Step two, the board goes through and assigns the responsibility for each of those steps. Step three, we decide whether or not there are unclaimed items that need a committee.
Thank you. Director Marvin?
Ms. Amundson, I think you absolutely nailed it. I think that's exactly the direction we need to go, and I would like to move this to action.
It's motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Can I second? Discussion. Right? Yep, discussion.
Okay, I'm just going to ask to clarify. If we vote to approve this, are we creating a governance committee with that focus as Director Amundson just listed, or are we approving the focus that includes more tasks as described in the charge statement? Because the only thing that is really relevant is the one... No, it's not, sorry. There's a... I'm looking at a paragraph, and I'm looking at the list. We're talking about, we're approving that whole list. And then if this were to be voted down, someone would have to propose a formal structure to what Director Amundson just suggested?
I'm with you, and I'm getting the hand signals off-camera, that we're nodding heads, and I also think, you know, there's the possibility that... I'm trying to, you know, sum up and summarize, you know, maybe you just have a, well... That you have a, you know, retreat in January, and you go, you, you know, study session, whatever, you start working on the calendar, and you work from there, as opposed to designating a committee to work on the calendar, to, you know... I don't think it needs a... Well, I'll stop there. Does that help or more confuse you? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes to both. It helps and confuses you more. Good. Glad I did that for you. Thanks. Other discussion on moving this to action? Please raise your hands, because I can see four faces, so I don't know if anybody wants to talk.
Well, I guess I'll just clarify, because I think I have to be clear on... I only get to say "I" in a, this is my chance to say my reason for "I." I think that even though I've heard a number of concerns about the whole list, I'm inclined to vote "I," because I still think there's an opportunity to define the role of the committee to address all the concerns that the board has, but I feel like we have to establish the committee to get that started. So that's the reason I'll vote "I" on the resolution.
Okay, thank you. And we're discussing, and thank you for that. We don't all need to say which way we're voting, just as a reminder, but that's fine that you do that. Thank you. Melissa?
Well, I mean, I was interested in compromising, but since it's been moved to action, I would just say that, you know, this is my first choice, to formalize the tasks, to make sure that they are addressed in a methodical and consistent way and spread across more individuals on the boards. So, I mean, I guess there would still be an opportunity for a friendly amendment at this point, would there not? But I don't think I'm going to be able to add to that. I'm just suggesting that for those people who want to compromise, they might consider doing that.
There is also the possibility that we vote this not to move to action. So, just... And have more discussion. Director Rickman?
You're muted, Director Rickman.
It's probably just as well, because I was being more incoherent than usual when I started talking, so that was a save for the moment. Now I'm going to talk, and then I'll be gone. Is that we can vote this up with the understanding, or my expectation would be that this isn't a one-and-done, that we would have a study session at some point on this, and we could tackle which of these things do we really want to focus on. I think the Item F was the one that has come out the most clearly. But, you know, if other people are reluctant to take everything that's on this list, then I would certainly welcome recommendations for striking out what you don't like. If you want to strike out all 18 items, of course, that would be your prerogative, because I think basically there's probably a bit of a philosophical difference in terms of where we're trying to go and how best to get there. So, the implementation of these things doesn't have to be decided tonight, for sure. That could bear some study. And I was still incoherent, so I should have just left my mic off.
Director Amundson?
I would just point out that although I agree with Director Rickman about, you know, there's still plenty of opportunity for edits, I think it would be very difficult for people to submit their input at this point, one by one, via email, because how would the committee decide which recommendations to accept and not to, because there's clearly a large divergence spectrum of opinions? So I would suggest not taking that approach. But the question right now is to move it to action or not, correct?
Correct. We have a motion and second to move this to action. We are having discussion. Director Marvin?
And my point is strictly procedural, that if we move this to action, what we're agreeing to is to accept the committee exactly as it is stated. I think there would absolutely be room after that. If we vote it up, great, then it's the committee. If we vote it down, there's certainly the opportunity afterwards to discuss tonight or another time, do we want an ad hoc committee to repair a calendar? But what we're voting on right now to move to action is the committee and the description, the charge statement as it exists.
Yes. Thanks for the clarification. Yes. So, we are looking purely at the document as it stands. It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. If it is moved to action, I will read the resolution, and then we will vote on that. If it is not passed to move this to action... It... But does it come back at the next meeting? Sorry, hang on. Okay. Where's my parliamentarian? Okay. So, if it fails to move to action, it does, from what I'm understanding, it just sort of fails, even if, similarly to if it was moved to action and was voted down there. If it fails to move to action, it could come back as a briefing item modified at the next board meeting. Okay, I'm seeing some nodding heads, so I always think that's a good, that's always a good thing. Nope, I've got a nod, I've got a non-nod. I've got a not-notter, a shaker. I've got a shaker. Go ahead, Melissa. Unmute.
So, when you say it could come at the next board meeting, would it automatically come, or what would decide if it did or didn't?
I think so. I think Wendy is saying that she would bring it back, because she likes us so much. But if it comes back as it is...
Last meeting to be easy, right?
But likely, I think we're all understanding, if this is, if this goes forward and is voted down as-is, there's no point in bringing it back. If it doesn't move to action tonight as-is, I would suggest not bringing it back as-is in a week. Got it? Okay. Director Marvin?
So, a question, and for you or for Wendy. Would it be cleaner if this were moved to action and then decided definitively, yep, we're going to take it, or no, we're not, which still would not close the door on having some sort of ad hoc committee? Or is that cleaner than just voting not to move it to action at all? Julie's shaking her head.
I think so, but I've got the movers and shakers, so I don't know. What say you movers and shakers?
Yes. Kathy's doing this. So, I think it's important to just come to some consensus about how we move forward. And I think this has been a great discussion, because we've agreed on a lot of things that are important. But right now, like move it to action, move it down, or not move it to action and not know?
Correct. Director Rickman, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a point of clarification. So, if we move it to action and it's voted down, then the idea of a governance committee is dead in the water forever. Do I have that right? Maybe not forever.
Nothing is forever.
Right, I know that, but I heard somebody say, "Well, if we vote it down, then it doesn't come back, like, ever." And maybe I misunderstood what was intended.
Yeah, if you move it to action and you vote it down as an action item, it doesn't come back. But if you vote it down, you can even move it to action and still vote it down, you can still bring it back as an amended-type committee.
So, if we do nothing tonight, then the result is the same. I mean, it seems to me if we move it to act, if we don't move it to action, we can still bring back something that's amended. If we move it to action and vote it down, we can still bring something back to be amended if...
You can do either. Either will work, but you cannot approve what's out there now, because that is the item that not everybody agrees on, the charge statement.
Well, that's what we're voting on, though.
You can, if that's your choice.
I mean, if it comes to vote...
But if it gets voted down, you can't bring it back as it is. It has to change.
It has to change. Okay. Thank you, Wendy. I think you clarified it for me, and I'll try and hang on to it in my...
Okay. So, okay. Yeah, thanks. When Wendy talks, I can't hear. So, I got lost, a little lost. So, Kathy, and then Melissa?
So, if, where the vote is to move to action, if it is moved to action, can amendments be suggested, not just to the resolution language, but to the governance committee charge statement itself? So that the resolution could be amended to include ad hoc and the charge statement of the governance committee as amended? Because those are the two ideas I've been hearing from everyone, that they're looking for an amendment of the charge statement to focus on the calendar, and they're looking for it to be ad hoc.
Let's do this. Let's take a pause, so Wendy's head doesn't explode thinking about Robert's Rules of Order. I will do a little, I will try to do a little summation. Oh, sorry, did you want to interject something, Melissa, before I... Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the problems I have with what we're considering is that if we, if we... The recommendation that I'm hearing is that we bring something back that's revised at the next meeting, but as one of the two people on the committee who put it together, I'm wondering, does it fall then to that committee to revise it? Because I am unclear as to how to revise it, so therefore, I'm not willing to take on that job. Somebody else would either have to work with me... I mean, we're hearing so many different opinions, I'm not sure that we have a clear consensus of how to amend it. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So I'm hesitant for us to move forward saying, "Bring back an amendment," because I don't know who or what that would look like.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so I'm going to try and do some summation, and what do you call that, strap-hole? I got Mark I haven't seen, Julie I haven't seen, and Melissa's still over her head.
I need more help.
Okay. Hang on.
What are we thumbing up or down?
The compromise seems to be that there is not an appetite to accept the full charge statement of the governance committee as proposed. I'm asking board members if the compromise would be that this got voted down as-is, because that would be slightly cleaner, and that next time an item comes back to form an ad hoc committee to work on creating a calendar. So I was just taking the temperature, as if that is what folks would be comfortable with. Melissa?
That's a relic hand. That's from last time, sorry.
And does it, does it go without saying that we're creating a calendar for the purpose of bringing it to a board meeting, a board study session? For those people who are concerned about the control of the committee versus the control of the whole board?
Yeah, I think so. Julie?
This is a wonderful example of who said what and what are we agreeing on or not. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chair Seelinger, but if you don't mind, could you summarize the last three minutes? If you can read your notes. You can just say you can't read your notes, and, like I said, if you can't, that's fine.
At this point, we have a motion and a second to move this item to action. If this item gets moved to action, then we would vote on it as-is. If this item is not approved to move to action, it will come back, but if it comes back in the same iteration, I don't, without any changes, I don't believe that it would pass in its current state. Melissa has expressed concern that changing the charge statement, that there's not enough information or consensus about the items in the charge statement to make a recommendation to change it. I've heard on the other side, not other side, but similarly, the interest in the creation of a calendar. So Kathy's suggestion was potentially to create an ad hoc committee to work on a board calendar, and then that would be the piece that was retained out of the list to go forward with. And so I was trying to get the temperature of the board, if that is something that they were interested in, knowing that we wouldn't be voting on such a thing tonight, because it's not in front of us. Was that helpful? Kathy?
And who would be responsible for putting together the language for a new, I assume, briefing item, brand-new briefing item, right? That would come to, start again. If this was voted to action, and then it was, and then it was voted down, who would be responsible for bringing a new briefing item to, or writing the language and bringing the new briefing item to the next meeting?
Excellent question. Dr. Marvin's going to answer that for you.
I am. I won't give a smart aleck answer either. I'm thinking that the executive team, and I'm speaking for Deborah, but I'm hearing what she's saying, that we would bring forth an item that would initiate an ad hoc committee that would create an annual school board planning calendar that would track items requiring action and recommending agenda items to the executive committee. And that that could be initiated in a study session. But we would have that, around that kind of language.
Thank you, Jean. Other questions? Comments? Fruit basket upset. Okay. I'm seeing none. So Ms. Edgar, would you please call the vote to move the item to action?
Ms. Amundson?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Sussner?
Nay.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
And Ms. Workman?
Abstain.
It moves forward.
Aye, it is moved forward.
Yep. Sorry. Yep. Okay. It is now an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the charge statement of the governance committee. And this is just straight vote, right? Oh, I need to move approval, sorry.
Move approval, Marvin?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Do we have to have more discussion? More discussion? Any discussion? Go ahead. Any discussion before Wendy calls the vote? All right, go ahead.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Nay.
Ms. Marvin?
Nay.
Ms. Workman?
Nay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Workman, what was that?
Nay.
N-A-Y? Got it. Thank you.
Sorry. Motion fails. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Cabinet and Superintendent for being here. Thank you, Ms. Edgar. Thank you, Ms. Severson, for joining us this evening. Tune in next week, no, not next week. Tune in two weeks. We'll be back. I adjourn this meeting at 8:39 PM.